And we'll take up the flag salute. Chief Gill, would you be able to send the flag salute picture?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief, the chief is also wants to let everybody in the room know that if you are staying here for lunch, to let somebody in the kitchen know so that they can prepare accordingly. Got it? Okay, yes. Go ahead, go ahead.
Present.
Present.
Here.
Present.
Here. Well, first off, thank you to the community of Copco and residents in the area for housing this board meeting here. We're glad to be here. We want this to be an opportunity for many of you that have not been able to come into town at a regular board meeting. We wanted this to be specifically for the Klamath-related issues and what you're dealing with up here. I would ask that we have a decorum of respect. I know that this is a difficult situation for many and I'm sure to some degree there is will be a bit of emotion in some of the presentations from the public, but we want to hear from you what's going on. You, as you can see from the agenda, there's many items that you'll be able to speak to and we'll go through it accordingly. I do, or I would like to keep it at three minutes per person. I know that we have the latitude to go a little longer than that, but with many people here and many public comment cards that I already have and letting everybody have a chance to speak, I'd like to keep it to three minutes. So if I begin to cut you off in after the three minutes, if you could continue, it's no disrespect. I just want to be able to get everybody to be able to present. So, any questions from staff on anything going forward? Questions from board members before we begin? Not, let's start with presentations from the public. Now, some of you have just put down presentations from the public. There's others that have items and I'll call you on those items since that's what you've designated unless you want to speak during public comment. So, persons speaking during public comment will be limited to three minutes. And well, we're going to leave it at three minutes. I'm not going to go through the rest of this. Except as otherwise provided by law, no action discussion will be taken or conducted on any item not appearing on the agenda. So today's agenda, public comment, is specifically to agenda items only. And this is by government code section fifty-four ninety-five four point three. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record prior to providing your comments. Please address the board as a whole through the chair. Comments to individuals, supervisors, or staff are not permitted. The only other thing I would ask during public comment is to keep clapping or you know vocalization to support or opposition. We want to hear from the individual.
K R R C, it is our fiduciary duty to maintain, repair, and/or replace common areas which protects property of its members. We must make decisions based on sound business judgment in good faith, in the best interest of the corporation, and with reasonable inquiry, and I wish K R R C used the same practices. Our campground along Klamath River below Iron Gate is our common area. We have eighteen campsites, a lodge, a pool, our office, showers, a shop, and a camp host mobile. I forgot a footbridge also. We are migrate mitigating directly with K R R C as our corporation does not fit the mitigation fund requirements. An issue we had to point out to K R R C after we got their attention. The mitigation process goes like this. K R R C, an engineer makes recommendations, but we do the research and find contractors and engineers at our cost to get estimates and consultations for protecting our common area. To date, we have spent seventy-eight thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars. Today, we are having a contractor raise the campsite electrical pedestals four feet at a cost of twenty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars. The cost for floodwalls, as suggested by K R R C's engineer, came in at six point five million dollars. Our property was appraised at one million fifty thousand, so I don't think we're doing floodwalls. We now have all our information to move forward with an agreement with K R R C. Now the real work begins, but money will never satisfy the loss we feel. The K R R C board is exhausted. We are volunteers, retired, and love our community. We are watching our beautiful river and the recreation that drew us to retire here go to hell with absolutely no empathy to our loss. We cannot change it, but we can demand respect for our feelings. We can demand compensation for the potential damage we may endure. We now live in the unknown regarding fires, floods, returning wildlife, and yes, even fish. We won't know until it happens. I sincerely hope the science is correct, though most of us will not live long enough to even see it. There is not enough money that K R R C can throw at us to give us our peace and tranquility back, but I thank the supervisors for allowing us to speak out. Thank you.
So Noah, before you leave, can you tell me on the costs that you just explained, the six point five million, the twenty-six thousand, seventy thousand, is that to be borne by your folks or is that is that on the table for what's coming your way?
We're hoping to recoup what we have paid out and what our expenses are, and we're hoping to actually establish some sort of an amount of money that we can set aside for any potential damages. K R R C has offered to pay like one year worth of flood insurance through FEMA and they also offered to pay for our pedestals to be raised, but we're holding off until we can find a lump sum that we can go forward with.
Brendan Bowling. Good morning.
Morning. My name is Brendan Bowling. I live at six-two oh-two Agar Bedwick, right down the road. My concern is, obviously.
You can probably take that off, yeah, and pull it up to you if you want. Go ahead.
Obviously, everything's been shut down around here. My concern is, as an avid fisherman, how long is it going to take for the river to come back? And are we going to have access to it?
Hopefully, we will get that addressed in the presentation today.
Okay.
Thank you. William Simpson.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board. My name is William E. Simpson, the second. I'm a rancher here in Hornbrook, and I think some of you know me. I'm here to talk about the astounding failure of K R R C to do the preparatory work to protect the water and the wildlife in this area with this dam removal project. We're seeing now that the sediment that's been released, which is a fraction of what's still remaining in the bottoms of these lakes, has tainted water to a level where we're seeing chromium, according to Nielsen Laboratories, one hundred and seventy-eight times over the EPA limit. Even if they're fifty percent wrong, it's still amazing. I mean, it's shockingly high. And then we're also seeing lead at six times the amount acceptable by the EPA. We're seeing cadmium, six times the level, barium at thirty-seven times, arsenic at six, and mercury at seven times acceptable upper limits. These are, these are, I mean, this is beyond Eric Eric Brockovich. I mean, we're talking about serious pollution and this was a water sample taken, analyzed, and I didn't take it. It was taken by an independent party and it was given to Nielsen Labs, who's very credible and very good at what they do. And these, these numbers are gigantic and they, the river never had numbers like this before. Otherwise, these kind of numbers, Canary and the Coal Mine are our eagles and our ospreys. If they're eating fish that are contaminated, fish concentrate these chemicals in their bodies. So if that was in the water before the dam removal, the eagles and the ospreys would die because they they're eating fish, they're concentrated in their bodies, and then and then they get it and they die. We've never seen a dead eagle, never had a dead osprey. So this idea that it's been here before is not true. Okay? These, these heavy metals are coming out of the sediments. D O I fired Dr. Paul Hauser when he raised the caution flag, saying he's very concerned about the sediment release. There was scientific studies saying that it had to be taken out before the dams were lowered to prevent this kind of erosion and leaching. And the big problem we have coming up is that because about eighty percent of that sediment didn't go anywhere, every time it rains, it's going to continue to erode and leach these heavy metals into the river. So there will be no comeback. It may take a hundred years for all of this to leach out into the into the Klamath River, seriously. So right now, there's only, there's only two solutions. They have to come in and dredge it out and Mr. Bantscum is in here somewhere. He's probably going to defer and and kick the can down the road and we'll get back to you, all of his standard answers. But the problem is, is that stuff has to come out of the of the bottom or our other option is to plug the dams up and cover it with water again to prevent precipitation from eroding. Those are the only two options to to solve this problem. This is a super fun problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Holly Hansard.
Good morning.
Hello, my name is Holly Hansard. This was my late father's community, and here I am, my dad's daughter. I have a lot of blank pieces of paper, a lot of pens. I would invite anybody who makes a statement today or anybody who didn't to write an affidavit. You know, I declare to the penalty of perjury that all I've said is true and correct. Write your personal firsthand witness of what, like that gentleman just said, what you know and identify yourself. And then I will pay the paralegal in Byrica three hundred dollars so that anybody here who would like to do their affidavit can do it for free. Just go into Siski legal documents to get it notarized and then go get a couple copies of it and keep it. What we will do with it remains to be seen, but I give verbal oral notice that something is amiss and I hope to do a formal written notice to not only the Siski County Board of Supervisors. Individually, I know that you're not against us, but also to our governor and to our president and all entities. And hopefully, we can get some help on that and these affidavits can be in support. As I drove here, my seeing the canyon here, I saw it when it was beginning and the and the stuff and just hearing this testimony, and I'm not even recording myself, I recorded the other people, but it's a tragedy. It's an economic environmental tragedy. What was allegedly before, oh, the fish, whoever got paid off in the tribes, God knows, to support it, whatever, I don't know. I don't know the details, but if anybody knows any details of what they know, that they've seen an animal injured or what have you, an eagle or what they know in the past, please see me. I have blank pieces of paper and pen. I don't have anything formal, but just, you know, do your best to write what you can. And my email is holly@finestplanet.com, like the best planet. And we are all for the beauty of this wonderful environment that's basically no longer there. There was someone who said, I stopped right before here and there was a gentleman, he goes, oh, I think it, I said, this looks tragic. He goes, oh, I don't think so. I would, it depends if you talk to it. It's beautiful. So I am not going into somebody else's eyes, but anybody who lives here who knows what they've experienced, especially with this tragedy, which I see as an absolute travesty and tragedy. And also I have copies of the dam of twenty thirty that if people would like to see that people really, maybe they don't want us to go back to the Stone Age, but they aren't just interested in this dam, they, whoever they are, interested in all the dams across the United States of America. And look what they're building in China, dams. China is building dams in Africa and South America. And believe me, in thirty years, God forbid, they take over, they will build, rebuild this dam and they don't give a damn about our fish, so the salmon. So God bless America and thank you very much for being here and I ran here on empty, so hopefully someone can help me with gas before I go home. Thank you. The sheriff said they would. Thank you.
Linda Ebert. Good morning.
My name is Lyndy Ebert. I live on down the road on Copco Road. I just wanted to present some before and after pictures and I'll leave them by the podium or wherever. This is what my husband and I enjoyed when we came here about twenty-three years ago. It was a paradise. All kinds of recreational fishing. We enjoyed bird populations, the visibility of the pelicans and the seagulls and geese right out in front of us and we have an expansive expansive, not expensive, expansive shorefront. We did along our property and now what I'm looking at is this. I see a sliver of river opposite the dock that we used to have, which I had to relocate. I had to pull it out at great expense, but that's all right. I haven't seen evidence of restoration. I have below my property and above it around on the other side of the lake, but the efforts at restoration, well, may be sincere. And there have been some efforts at planting seedlings and I've seen one fellow with a bag of seeds hand broadcasting with his hand. It seems woefully inadequate for the task at hand. We've got a bleak landscape around here, as Holly pointed out, and I'm looking at a rather bleak one myself. And I hope more effort can be put toward it, more workforce effort, more resources. As old as I am, by the time the seedlings that are about eighteen inches high mature, I probably won't be here. I would like to at least see the tree stumps and tree stocks in front of my place and that's my, that's my view right now, replaced with some trees, if possible. A handful is fine, anything. But I haven't seen anybody along the entire frontage of where I am at all. I haven't seen anybody out there and there's significant frontage out there. And here's some of the devastation. This is on the other side of the lake. And I have many more pictures if anybody's interested, but I didn't didn't bother to bring them. Thank you and thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Linda Ebert. I live on down Copco Road.
I think it's Brett Peterson. Is that right? Or have I, Bet, okay, sorry. Good morning.
My name is Bet Peterson. I live in Hornbrook. Thank you for for having, calling this meeting here. I'd like to talk a little bit about narratives. I think there's been some marketing going on, maybe the marketing's been going on for years to sell this to people, to sell the idea. I think a lot of good people believe that this would be a good thing. In some ways, I thought that this would be a good thing, but the narrative about this being a dam, I think a removal of a dam maybe is not completely accurate. I mean, right now, what we have, we have, we have tons of toxic waste that's being released down the river right now. We haven't talked about, there is a lot of emotion. There, people care about this community. People care about the river, care about life. If you call yourself an admire, I'm, this is, this is not what we were sold. I'd like to talk about the narratives about the idea that there's history around here. There's, there's a lot of history, a lot of history that some of us are just learning. I'm just learning about Mr. Henley. Henley, exit seven eight nine, you all probably came off exit seven eight nine and may not know that Mr. Henley was not only a senator of California, he was he was superintendent of Indian Affairs from eighteen fifty-five to eighteen fifty-eight, which may not mean a whole lot to many people, but it it had a lot of effect. Injustices, things, things that happened to the Shasta people, things that happened to actually Native Americans all over California. And it matters. These narratives matter. These narratives that whether or not the Shasta people are declared a federally recognized tribe or not, it's really irrelevant. In my, in my mind, it's irrelevant, irrelevant. Mr. Henley, Mr. Henley did a lot of things to grease the skids for his own, his own pocketbook. I, I've been researching the National Archives and I do know a little bit about this. I'm learning more. The point is, is that there are many injustices that happened back then and there are injustices injustices still happening now. Lies, 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 lies. The fish out there that are dead, the animals that are dead, they're not lying. They're dead. They're not coming back and this doesn't end today. This doesn't end. Okay, I really probably don't have anything else to, anything more to add to this except that I can talk about Mr. Henley. I can talk about, I can't talk about, speak for Native Americans. I can talk about some of the injustices that were done federally, by the state, locally, the things that happened to the Shasta people. There, it's never been, it's never been talked about and in some ways, I think these injustices, we, they need to be acknowledged. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bet Peterson.
Rick Castalis. Good morning, sir.
My name's Rick Castalis. I'm from the Scott Valley. And it's good to see you guys. Supervisor Ogren, I didn't work for you. I was before your time and then a lot of friends here and fellow warriors on this deal. Sorry to be a pain in your butt again, but at least you're not paying me. And and I get to dress like the real me instead of trying to pull the wool over your eyes on who I really am. So I wrote this. Another thing is, it's brief, unlike my usual work for you guys. So I got started in the water and fish wars in nineteen ninety-nine as an amateur when the feds were using the designation of critical habitat for the listed coho salmon to exert control over private property. It was a long journey via my grassroots start to becoming a professional professional when I worked for you for eight years. For you, I helped fight the good fight, being your pinch hitter when you couldn't attend something or you wanted me to let you know what was happening on some dam-related front. Though the only thing I'm really good at is cutting trees, I taught myself quite a bit about fish and water. We fought the good fight on the dams and we lost. We're pawns in an experiment on river rewilding. We're stuck with the consequences. We can do nothing but hope that nature will fix this disaster. And I have every confidence that nature will heal itself in some fashion. Like virtually everyone here, I think the timeframe and the outcome is nothing close to what proponents proponents sold to the public and they will not be accountable for the consequences. I'm not here to bitch about the dams and the Klamath River. I'm here to try to make sure that the collateral consequences aren't any worse than direct impacts. I'm still engaged in the fight. As a director of the Scott River Water Trust, I help lease water from farmers and ranchers at critical times and places for fish while preserving water rights. I'm not here to represent the Scott River Water Trust. I'm just letting you know that I'm putting my money where my mouth is when it comes to proactively assisting on fisheries and water issues. So here's the deal. There are already some early out migrant salmon, including listed coho that have been killed. Later running fish are going to arrive at the ocean stressed and likely more vulnerable in the ocean segment of their lifecycle. This is going to have significant, if not severe, impact on the number of fish returning. Many of us hypothesize that fish are merely a vehicle to steal water, that the government doesn't have the massive amount of money required for the just compensation guaranteed by the Fifth Amendment. In the Scott and Shasta Valleys, what will likely be a decommissioning-related precipitous decline in returning adults will play into the ongoing effort to hogtie irrigated agriculture to the point where it becomes economically unsustainable. Fish will need much more water. The effort to take water has been ongoing for years. Fewer fish will shift it into a high, and they'll shift it into much higher gear. I'm here to urge the board to get out in front of this issue. The direct consequences of dams coming out are going to be bad enough. Don't let it become far worse by allowing the impact of decommissioning on returning fish to be used to steal water and force agriculture further on the ropes. Spread the word far and wide via your public information opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony, Holly, is it?
I'm coming.
Okay. How are we doing online, Anna? Nothing online, okay. Yes, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing us to do this. I can feel the passion in this room and I want to welcome all the kindred souls that are here. I got to find my little page. Oh, my name's Tony Holly. I live in Hornbrook and been coming up here since nineteen sixty-eight. Our parents bought property at K R C E that where they planned to retire. And my dad passed before he could finish the place that he built for my mom, but she lived there until she died two years ago. Two days before Christmas and I wet. And I wept then. I haven't wept since then, until now. And I want to thank William Simpson for being here with his comments. My biggest concern is not what, what's been going on up to this point. My biggest concern is now. We live approximately a thousand feet from the river, just above the Klamathon Bridge. And we are going to be testing our water because we're very close to the river, which every time we test, unless there's a slush fund, a gratis situation where we can do that, it's going to cost us, especially if we test for chromium, about $300 a pop. And we want to do this progressively to make sure that our well is not only not going to be toxic, but dry up completely. My sister and I live there. I'm 70, I'll be 71 in March. My sister will be 73 in August. Our husbands have passed. We live there on the property that our mom and dad developed. I don't want to find out that our well is going to go dry, so we have to uproot ourselves that we live on a limited income and find someplace else to go. So first and foremost, what about the water testing? We all are going to have to do it. And if it's 300 bucks a pop, most people can't afford that every time we turn around to do that. Have to find my one last little, I've got a whole book full of things here. Oh, I know many of us heard over the past years that the drawdown was going to be slow, methodical, waiting for the banks to dry up so that the sledge could be pulled off and replanted as the water dropped. Not this completely random, pull the cork, let it all run out, and now we're stuck with this. And I, and I know that this is what we were told, you know? It's going to happen. This is going to be the procedure. And that was not done. That's one of the other lies that happened. And again, we are being pawns in a test, as it were, for other dams. And the emotion in the community and the Facebook pages that we've been able to link each other with our passions have been invaluable, but we're getting nothing but lip service from the KRC, which I would like to see on paper. Their tax records, their stamped in ink policies that we can go back on and say, but you said this, gentlemen. Now you're doing this. And something came out just this morning, back in December of 2016, that stated very, very concisely that this type of procedure cannot be done without congressional approval, not local, not community, not state congressional approval. And I can't find any, anybody that can prove that that was done. And so we are all being victimized because of politics and money and supposedly water rights. And...
I need you to wrap it up on some...
All right, very good. And that's pretty much it. And I hope that we can all follow through on this passion.
Thank you. Any more public comment, not listed for specific items? Chrissy, come on up. You can fill out a blue card after, it's fine.
I'm Chrissy Reynolds. I live next door. Thank you, guys. I know how hard you guys have fought. I'm also concerned about the toxicity in the sediments. And I'm also concerned about whether or not we're doing another harm to our tribal people who are replanting, if there's chromium six and these other things. Are they being exposed again because of another lie that they're being told? I want to say what I mean, mean what I say and not say it mean. You all come into our house, where we eat, where we grieve, where we celebrate, and today where we stand empowered. We've watched our people, our county, our elders, our wildlife be treated with disdain and disrespect. Instead of teaching our children to respect authority, we're having to teach them to stand against those powers and principalities that think that they are above the law. But we see you, and by your fruits we know you. Everything we have warned against so far has come to pass, except the toxic dust storms because the mud has not dried yet. And we still have our farmers, ranchers, and food producers. We see you for who and what you are, and no matter the amount of bought and paid-for science, publicity, and show, we know who you are and what you are. No one is above universal law and brotherly and sisterly love for all creation. I feel sorry for you. Thank you, guys, for coming. I know you know how hard this is for us. And for the people that are cheering and celebrating, I would just ask you to remember your humanity for the people that fought for this country, have sacrificed for this country, and are losing by outside entities that don't live here, are not vested in our interests. And we cannot let this happen anywhere else.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Go ahead. State your name when you come up. Good morning, and you can fill out a blue card afterwards, it's fine. Oh, you have one?
Good morning. My name is Brian Engen. I live in Hornbrook, California, like many other people here that are from Hornbrook. And I'm also a member of the R Ranch. And I also am a member of KRCE, Klamath River Country Estates. And both of us have campgrounds that are right on the river that are now pretty much destroyed. There's dead fish everywhere, dead animals, dead crocodiles. It's just terrible. Basically, Klamath River is now the River of Death. It's terrible. I am an avid fisherman, like many other people in this room. I fish weekly, if not daily. And I did fish at the Iron Gate, and I also camped at the campgrounds there that are very nice campgrounds. And KRCE has very nice campgrounds, and R Ranch had very nice campgrounds. And hopefully in the future, things will get better, but I, I can't see that for 20 years down the road. So now I'm probably going to have to drive an hour away to find a good fishing place, but that's no problem because I love fishing. And just, this is horrible, what's happening, devastating to the community of all communities up here. And hopefully something can be done about the River of Death. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in house for public comment, not on a specific item? I'm sorry. Good morning. I failed to recognize Congressman Lamafa's Representative Erin Ryan. Good morning.
Hi, I'm Erin Ryan from Congressman Lamafa's office, and I've been coming here for a long time with all of you. And honestly, my thing with this has always been the liability. And we knew that this project could never get a construction bond because there was no one in their right mind that would bond a one-off project that, my dad, that was his industry, and he always said the bond would have to be about $7 billion. And I thought, okay, well, no one's ever doing that. That's crazy. We, none of us, honestly, I haven't, I haven't met one person who said, oh, we always thought the state would become a co-licency and take over the liability. No one really saw that coming. This didn't ever have congressional action. The congressman blocked the Klamath Basin Restoration Agreement way back when, like, I don't know, 2013, 14, whenever that was, because it had dam removal in it. And we always knew that the dams were the linchpin for everything else. And you've, I don't know if you've followed this since you've had your own problems happening here, but the Kino Dam was transferred from control of Bureau of Reclamation to Department of the Interior. What could go wrong? So the folks up there now, I think, are starting to think, uh-oh, this might have something to do with me. The people in the Scott and Shasta. Now we have the water balancing magic that's going on with the state because they're going to want their water because there's going to be a giant clog up here. So all these things, this involves everyone. I speak to people all over the place, and I'm taking calls from all over the country about this. And I guess that was the one thing I wanted to bring to you, is that you're not this itty-bitty community and it's only affecting you and you're the only ones who care. I'm getting calls from Illinois and Wisconsin, like all over the country. People are seeing your pictures online and they're horrified. And they're starting to talk to their representatives, like, hey, wait a second, they're talking about this for us. The congressman is doing floor speeches with your photos. I would love to have, I don't want to be ghoulish, but I would love to have your gruesome photos. Because big giant flats of mud, people kind of go, oh, big flats of mud, you know, huh? They, they don't really understand that. They, they see your house on the edge of a, of a hole. That means something to me because I know that some of you have received letters from the engineering company that said, oh, by the way, your house is going to slide off the edge when this all happens. And, oh, and there's no compensation for you. I don't think people realize that's even a thing, that that's possible, they can steal everything from you. You can't just sell your house and move away. No one's buying it. If it's destroyed, you still have a mortgage. There are all these things that are not being addressed. And, and Klamath River, or the KRC guys never did address it. We always told them, I've told Mark Branson, I've told him a million times, you know what? If it's a super fun site, we're naming it after you. Because honestly, they have, they have perpetrated this on everybody and they're selling it as a big myth that it's going to be fabulous, we need to do this to the Snake River, we need to do it everywhere. And although this is depressing and difficult, I would encourage you to just bury the internet in your photos. Keep taking them, keep putting them out there because people are seeing them. And this is a cautionary tale for everywhere else because Elwa and Condit and those places weren't a big enough disaster apparently. So they had to make a really big one here that might help people figure it out. But I'll tell you, if there's ever an opportunity for us to do, make some impact for you in a positive way, the congressman is absolutely focused. He's in a hearing today with Fish and Wildlife. Some ample opportunity to talk about wildlife today as relates to your issues. So I'm sure that'll be coming up. And EPA is also getting it earful, as is FERC. So you're not all by yourself. There are tons of people who, who want to support you. So just want you to know that.
Thank you.
And thanks for all the work you guys did because you never laid down on the job. So...
Thank you.
Anyway.
Is there any other, before I go to public again, is there any state or federal representatives that are in-house that I need to acknowledge? Okay, go ahead.
My name's Greg Jeter, and I just may be your next state or federal representative. You never know, right? So I have a couple of questions I know won't be answered maybe till later, but has to, one has to do with, well, both have to do with the wells. So there's been a couple wells here that have been dried up, and the mitigation process has brought in water tanks and hooked them up to the, the systems in the homes and provided water with them. And I appreciate that they handled that pretty quickly because they actually did. But question is, is that a permanent fix? Or will they come in and remedy the wells that were damaged? And then my other question has to do with the well water as well, as, as well as the water in the, the river. It's, William mentioned the pollution in the river, the heavy metals. And someone else mentioned the, the task of having to monitor your own well and test it. So question would be, will there be test kits available for people that have wells near the reservoirs or near the river? And then finally, just a comment, I, for me, it's, it's just the complete lack of truth that has been exposed during this process that's disconcerting. We all have asked questions along the way and we never got answers to some of the most vital questions. And we still don't know who the lands are going to belong to, the parcel B lands. Somebody mentioned how the reservoir was dropped in four days, and it was, it was intended to be dropped in weeks instead of days. Now I'm hearing that the complete destruction of the ecosystem, the death of the river, was planned, and that everything's going to plan. So it's just, it's very disturbing that we as citizens of this country and adults are treated like children, we're not told the truth, the truth is diverted around us, and we're treated like children. And that just needs to stop. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else in house? Come on the, whoever wants to come first. Good morning. And if you would fill out a blue card after, that's fine. And I'm not sure where they're at. Are they back there somewhere? They're in the back.
I have to say, I never thought that he'd just take home.
Could we get your name first?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Janine Spanish Harder. My great-grandfather lived on a ranch under the lake. He died in 1900. So the power company purchased the property from my grandfather and my great uncle. I asked my mother, well, why did they just sell out? And she says, well, they were going to put the dams in for electricity. And that, back then, was the way things were going, was to go for everything electricity. And I have a question. They want us to drive electric cars. They want us to take out our gas stoves. They want everything electricity. Why are you taking out the dams? So I have, I don't really have too much to say except that I was, my parents lived here when I was born. And coming back 30 years ago, I was told they're taking the dams out. I thought, that can't happen. That's not going to happen. And it did. The most devastating thing I have ever seen in my life. It went to vote, county vote, and it was voted for 81% not to remove the dams. What happened to our vote? I don't get it. We have no say in anything anymore. And the last thing is, I'd like to know, we're no longer Copco Lake. So what's our new name going to be? Copco Mud Flats?
Thank you. Go ahead, come on up. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Amanda Rainey. We live in Horse Creek. Try to control my emotions here. So I'm sixth generation. We have lived in Horse Creek and ranch in Horse Creek since the late 1800s. I understand 100% where everybody is coming from, but it's important that I came up to talk because I, it's clear nobody is taking into consideration all the cattle that are downriver. There's cattle that they get their water out of the river. If that's toxic, that's going to kill them. If that's toxic, that's going to kill them. We have gone through numerous large-scale fires in the last 10 years that have had disastrous impacts to said cattle. It's harder and harder to raise cattle in this state and in this country. All of these things are geared toward taking that right away, that ability. The average ranch in America is 44 cows. I've seen a lot of things saying that because our farms and ranches in Siskiyou County aren't big, they're not feeding America, but that's just not true. So besides the direct impact that's coming for the cattle that are specifically drinking out of the creeks, or out of the river, what we know, Shasta and Scott, they're calling for their water, it's only a matter of time before they start calling for the water of the smaller creeks that are tributaries to the Klamath. And that's going to be the destruction, final destruction of people who live along those creeks that are trying to raise cattle. I think the timing, if this had to happen, the timing is also extremely terrible, right? I mean, we have two large-scale fires downriver that are still healing. There are streams that are putting large amounts of mud into the Klamath, because they just got burnt. Most of the downriver from 263 has been burnt in the last 10 years. And I know a lot of folks out here in town have never been downriver, but it's just one giant fire scar. All of that sediment was put into the river. If a government agency opted to do some kind of a project like this, there's no way that it would get to go through, because the impacts are too strong, absolutely everything. And then this, these folks just roll along and just put, I mean, there's, you can't even put a number to it, you can't even properly describe it, but they're adding to the environmental impacts. The only thing that ever lasts forever is the earth, right? That's very true. So it will heal, but it won't heal in any of our lifetimes.
Anyone else? Come on up. Good morning.
My name is Barbara Austin. I live on the other end of Copco Lake. We have been told that all this reseeding and stuff is going to be so beautiful. Well, anybody that's lived here long enough knows that even if you have floods in California, what do we get in this part of Siskiyou County? We don't get the water. Right now, they're talking about all these toxins and stuff, well, that's still in the sand. For things to grow, it needs nutrients. It doesn't need toxins. We've asked them, are you going to put a fire break between our property and what you're seeding? Because where are you going to get the water for these things to grow? Where are you going to get the nutrients for them to grow? It's our only, had been our only defendable side. And they said, well, we might be able to put you in a fish, a fire break. Well, what good is if? Where is this water going to come from for fighting fires and to make these things grow? They won't tell us that. We still don't know where these so-called deep pockets are that they're going to be able to airlift water out of. The river goes right past our property, if you want to call it a river, it's a creek. I mean, I've got relatives in Missouri and I've, we know the difference in creeks and rivers. This is a creek. And unless they have ESP and can tell us where these deep pockets are, it's not going to help our firefighters. So we need to know what's going to happen. I know you're going to talk about the fire suppression and all this other stuff. But what is going to make these things grow? What's going to make them healthy? And we're still not.
Thank you. Greg, did you already speak? I'm sorry, this is your card? Yeah, okay, thank you. Anyone else? And I still have a few of you here for specific items that I'm holding on to, so I won't forget it. Good morning, Susan.
Hi. My name is Susan Marshall. I live in Fort Jones. I'm a rancher. This morning, I was thinking about the agreement that was signed by Governor Newsom and Governor Kate Brown, and when they took on liability for the full cost of this project within the states of California and the states of Oregon and the taxpayers, and agreed in the end to double what was going to be the money given to KRRC. And then, at the end, it said that the two states and Berkshire Hathaway, Pacific Corp, would be liable for the full extent of the project. That agreement was not signed on United States soil. It was signed on a sovereign nation. Does that make it null and void for the United States? I'm not a lawyer, I don't know. Perhaps Natalie could investigate that.
We'll find out, I guess. We'll ask the question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir, come on up. Good morning.
My name is Chris Chandler. I live about, eight miles past Highway 263 on 96. Dogs, cats, I got grandkids, I see rafters on the river, and I see the metal reports in the water samples. Is there any effort going to be made to shut the river down for safety? Because I wouldn't swim in that river with the chromium and the heavy metals that's in there. You know, when you're talking 178 times the EPA recommended level, that water isn't safe? You got tour season going to start? Is there anybody going to shut the river down for tourists? Thank you.
Thank you. I saw someone else.
Hello. My name is Rick Doughty. I live on Patricia Avenue, just down the road. Can all agree, I think, most of us, that this is basically a crime against fish, animals, and humanity. I've done a little studying on constitutional sheriffs, and I'd like to propose a remedy. And that would be for the supervisors to get behind the sheriffs and the sheriffs to put a stop to this, get them to rebuild the dams and give us our lakes back. They were to release the water from the bottom of the dam, we'd have a very healthy river. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? In-house, I see a hand up over there. Anyone online, Anna? Good morning.
I'm not good at this. I don't like talking in front of people, but my name is Debbie Culpa. I live on the Klamath River. About 15, 20 years ago, we fought for the Coho, they wanted to take 30, 300 property from the river to the house for the Coho salmon. We fought that, we won, because this was supposed to save the Coho. Now they killed them. I mean, so I don't understand the purpose of all this, you know? And we water, we take water from the river for our property and stuff. Now we can't. And I just don't understand why they did this. When we all want it, we voted against it. So you're telling us, we could vote all we want, but it means shit.
Anyone else in-house? Good morning, Sheila.
Hi. I didn't intend to get up and say anything, but everyone has been kind of speaking off the cuff, and so I'm, that's what I'm going to do, so bear with me. Sheila Neamber. And my husband and I run and operate a cattle ranch in Montague. Actually, it's, the city of Montague splits our ranch in half. We've got a lower ranch that's along the Shasta River, so we're battling the state Water Resources Control Board or issues there. And then we live also north of Montague, where our residence is. Couple of things I wanted to let you know is that my husband's great uncle was John Boyle, and he would be rolling over in his grave, seeing what is happening to the dams. Bill Simpson mentioned the heavy minerals and metals that have been discovered in, with the taking out of the dams, and this is real, I think, concerning. I think, as a result of that and other issues, the mud, the sludge, the death of the animals, and everything else that goes with it, classifies this as a potential superfund. And the money that's been taken out of our electric bills every month to take out the dams, and the mitigation fund that's been set up, is not going to be enough money to compensate everyone and the lawsuits that are going to come. And they're going to come. So we all need to get together, we need to encourage our Siskiyou Board of Supervisors to stand behind us and start lawyering up. And I think people will support that. And a picture is worth a thousand words. I don't believe, we've heard from people that we know that live out of state, that have contacted us, when they've seen the articles and the pictures that have been online. And even I was shocked at the level, and I'm just surprised that this has been allowed to go on. So when Newsom and Brown signed an agreement, they pledged the liability of their two states to cover the liability involved. So I think that is an issue that is problematic, and if that, if there's not a stop being put against the KRRC from proceeding, we're in big trouble. And I think, I mean, this becomes an environmental issue, and I think that it can be, a lawsuit can be filed, and I think we all need to get together to do that, and not be saying, oh, it's not going to matter, it's not going to happen. I think there's plenty of holes in their agreements and in the process that they've been allowed to continue with. And I would hope that we could do that.
I'll need you to wrap it up.
I have some other comments, but I'll reserve those for later.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Theo Johnson. I raise cattle in Scott Valley. And I'm here to ask for KRRC and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife to be very transparent in their monitoring and reporting on what's happening in the Klamath River as far as water quality and aquatic life. Because we've heard several times here today that there's a fear that agriculture on the tributaries, where Scott and Shasta rivers are major tributaries to the Klamath, we're afraid we'll be held accountable when the fish don't return to our watersheds. And I would hope that the agencies and KRRC, I figured this would actually be one of their responsibilities, would be to monitor water quality and aquatic life, put out press releases that are easy to find, not buried, and let us know what's going on. I do, I have seen a study from University of Washington that the young juvenile salmonids suffer at turbidity levels of 30 to 60, I think the unit is FNU, whatever that stands for. Well, we know from the USGS gauges that are in the Klamath, for about a stretch of 100 miles that we know of, the turbidity is over 1,000, it has been consistently since Iron Gate was breached. So I think that information needs to be made public by the responsible parties, so that agriculture isn't held accountable. And I know that it's possible that we'll be held accountable, because we've been held accountable for the last few years of drought. And the emergency drought regulations required us, for example, in 2022 in Scott Valley, to give up 30% of our irrigation water. And we gave up stock water over the winter. 2022, the fall of 22, would have been when the Coho and Chinook adults were coming up our river to spawn. The juveniles that are leaving, trying to leave this spring, would be from those 2022 spawners. They're going to die when they hit the Klamath River. None of them will make it back. I don't want, and after all the sacrifices we made, I don't want us to be held accountable when the fish don't come back. Like I said, that's been, that's been history for us. We've been held accountable when our fish don't come back, regardless what the drought circumstances might have been. It was on us, and we did sacrifice a lot. And I just don't want this to become another familiar scenario, where once again, it's on us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in-house? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Colleen Moreno. My family has been, my grandparents bought up here in 1966 on Janus, and I also own, my family owns a property, and I have several, also lots on the end of Patricia. Well, come to find out, we can't even use our cabin, because the well is dry. The well feeds 11 other houses, and now it's completely dry. So I guess KRRC brought out a water tank to fill it up, but that's not going to help 12 houses for very long. So we're kind of a standstill of what we need to do. As soon as the water, as soon as the river went down, our water was gone, within three days. And now, so we have a beautiful cabin that looks right over the dam, or where the dam used to be, and now it's just mud flats. The other thing is, they're doing all the construction up on where the dam is. And my back window looks right, my family used to say, back window looks right up on the property. So all my neighbors are like, they're doing construction all day, most of the night. All we're seeing is we're hearing all this stuff. Our peace and quiet and beauty that used to look right over the dam and have gorgeous sunsets is gone, and it's really disturbing our peace. I don't live there, which is probably a good thing, I live on Agribaz with myself, but I can't even go to the cabin and enjoy the peace and quiet, because there's no more peace and quiet anymore. That's it.
Who is planning on having lunch? Raise your hand real quick here and we'll get an estimate. Raise your hand if you're having lunch here. Got it? Thank you. All right, with that, anyone else in-house? Okay, come on up. Nothing online yet? Okay. Good morning.
My name is Linda Oliver. I live just down the way, about 10th mile. I was in coordination with the federal government in 2003 to ask questions and find out what we were going to do about these dams. One person on that board was with me at that time, and he helped me tremendously. It's a disappointment to know the federal government could not even come back to this lake to answer the questions that we had. to answer the questions that we had. And one of them was fire. The extension of easements down to our creek to draw water. We know that's not going to happen. We know they're not going to be able to draw water out of here. But the devastation that they have done to this property, these people, is uncalled for. And the federal government needs to be held accountable for not following through, which was a law on coordination. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone on the back, I think it was? Anyone else? Come on up. I see a hand up there somewhere. Sure. If someone would. Thank you.
My name is Dorothy Dana. I have a house that lives right across the street. I don't live in, I, I live at the coast. We come up, we enjoy the lake. It was so beautiful. You have no idea. The pelicans that came up in the afternoon, in the morning. And then when they go upstream, they were the most beautiful sight you ever saw. It's gone. My children come up and they use the, the lake to, to recreate. There's nothing there to recreate. My daughter was here for three years and she was part of the community. It was just a wonderful thing. You have no idea what, what we've lost. We can never get it back. And, and I wrote letters for twenty years. That's as long as, to my congressmen, to my governors and, and to anybody that listening to the newspapers. And nobody heard me. That, that's, I think I got one letter back from all the letters I wrote. And it's a shame. We voted. I couldn't vote because I live on the coast. But I came up as often as I could because my husband loved to fish. He's gone now. And he would just absolutely want to cry as I do right at the moment. We came up this morning and that lake was just horrible, horrible. And I don't know who did it, but it's an absolute shame. I, 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 I don't think I'll ever get over. I'm ninety-two years old and I've seen the worst that could happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
My last name is Dana and my first name is Dorothy.
Anyone else in house for public comments? Anyone online? All right. You want to take a quick break? All right. We'll take five minutes for recess. And then we'll start up on IDMA.